Local Control Accountability Plan, this is an opportunity for public comments during this public hearing, so I'll now open that public hearing. Sure thing, thank you. Any public comment without any will now close the public hearing. All right, and we'll move now into item K, study session on the Local Control Accountability Plan, also known as LCAP.
Yes, so I present to members of the board, we're going to try to make this somewhat more informal than, of course, the budget presentations always tend to be a little bit more formal because of the nature of the topic. We want to try to make this more dialogue and conversation with the board. So with that, I'd first like to share the experience I had at the State Department today. I was up in Sacramento. Some of the board members know that I've been very active through my whole career with the Accrediting Commission. I do training for them and I do a lot of visits, and so we have an annual meeting in Sacramento every June, about ten of us that do training for WASC. And the morning is spent getting briefed by State Department Division Heads. And so, and the idea of course is, as we're training schools to prepare for accreditation, we need to know where the state's going with various things. As when we train school teams, they ask us questions like, what does this have to do with the LCAP plan, as an example? So, we were briefed by the head of the division that's responsible for Career Technical Adder, CTE, in terms of what the state, where the state is going, in terms of policy direction, some of the issues they're dealing with. We were briefed on the Smarter Balance Assessment and what the state assessments will look like over the next two to three years. And we were also briefed by the person who is the Division Director for the LCAP Department. And so, in relation to that briefing, I think one of the things that's clear is that the State Department's point of view with LCAP is that it's a evolving process. They would be the first to say it's not perfect. They, for example, have already indicated that the feedback in the field has been that the template is not user-friendly, it's not easy to use, and we were told that sometime in January, there will be a draft of a new template that will be presented to the State Board, and then there'll be a public comment period after that so that people can weigh in on that. There seems to have been around the table, because most of my colleagues who do training hear from a lot of schools and school districts, that they similarly were having issues with the template. But setting that aside, the two things that, the two takeaways, or the three takeaways, number one is that there are two non-negotiables. Number one, you have to use the state template for this year, which is what we heard from the county. And secondly, you have to make sure you address the state's eight priorities. So those are kind of what I would call non-negotiables. Beyond that, the state is saying, okay, you work with your county offices because in our, with the exception of the seven, exception of seven districts, or maybe counties, seven counties, I guess, the county offices have to approve district plans for LCAP, and that's the way it's set up. And I think the third takeaway is her comments related to the fact that we're going to be kind of in a state of organized chaos for two or three years until we kind of really work through the process. And so, the state's point of view is, it's kind of a fluid process as we move forward. The practical issue for us, though, in Alameda County and for our district is, we need to get the county to approve our plan. And so, I think we indicated to the board that we had our, the plan that you saw on May 28th was read and reviewed by the county staff, and we went in for feedback on the review on Friday, May 30th. I think that was a really good session, they gave us some really good feedback. Some of the revisions you've seen this evening came directly from the feedback that the county staff gave to us. So, without any ado, what I first want to do before we kind of launch into it section by section is I want to just, just say just a few things about the materials you have. So you should have a copy of the next version of the LCAP. There have been some revisions to Section 1 and 2, and some revisions to Section 3. In some cases, they're not quite complete yet, particularly around cost numbers, because as Mr. Vane had stated in his budget presentation, the SACS accounting system, quite honestly, because I've been working on Section 3, it doesn't lend itself to pulling out the kind of budget numbers that fit some of the things, some of the data that we're looking for. And so, in essence, in some cases, we'd have to do it manually, and so we just happened to have the time between our last review and now to complete that, but we're continuing to work on that. Beyond the actual template itself, you have an appendices, a set of appendices A, B, C, and D. Appendix A basically has the goals that you saw in the May 28th version, but based on the county's feedback, they wanted basically the kind of global goal statement, and so what you have in Appendix A is the elaborated goals as, as that came from the feedback from the stakeholder groups. So we just wanted to make sure it was still part of the record. Appendix B, which is not complete yet, but we tried to get as much of it done for tonight so that you can see what we're focusing on, is an effort to capture how base grant funding is spent to support the eight state priorities. And we'll review that later. Appendix C is pretty complete and similar to Appendix B. Appendix C, the purpose of C is to align and show how the parcel tax expenditures are aligned to the goals and the state priorities. And then Appendix D, which I won't talk about yet, is, is the priority instrument, priority setting instrument. If we are able to get to that this evening, we hope we are, for the board to engage in a little activity that I've structured for you, that I think you'll have fun with, hopefully, to kind of take a first run at looking at where the board is in terms of where the board's priorities are. So, those are the materials that you should have in your packet. And with, with that, I think we want to talk to you a little bit about Section 1, so I think that goes to the other side of the, of the room there. I don't know if Dr. Rubio, you want to see a few words or Anna Corita, Ms. Allen, you're going to introduce Section 1?
So, Section 1 states, it has two parts, the involvement process and then the impact on the LCAP. So, on the, in the first column?
What page are we on?
Four. At least my four. I don't know if there's been some other printing issues? Yes.
The involvement process?
Yes.
You know, I think there actually are printing issues, because I'm looking at the printout, and it's got longer and more information than what is online, which is what I would do. Is that possible? I'm just looking on page 12, for example, and it's, the online version cuts off at graduat-, I'm in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, the kind of the sixth column over. Graduation rates will improve 10% is where the online version cuts off. And then what you print it out goes on, based on the 13, 14 scorecard, and then there's a whole nother thing below that, students in grade 10, 11 will improve. And that's kind of cut off itself at the bottom. So, is that in Excel, the Word, the PDF?
PDFs to Word. I think there were two, there were two versions, a PDF and a Word version.
Yeah, you said, it's, I think it's, well, Dr. Ralph just showed me hers on a PC, and it's working, and maybe the issue that's, that is the difference on an iPad.
Well, then that's 13. This is a different 13.
Right.
So maybe, maybe the, how many pages is this? This is 30, that's true. The printout here is 30, my online version is 36.
Yeah, I think it just continues, so we can't go by page numbers unless we're all on paper or we're all on electronic.
So I'm working on the paper. So I'm on page four. So the first column describes the involvement process, and so that's broken down into the established stakeholder committees, meetings, and councils, basically explaining what occurred during the months of December, January, February, and March with established meetings or committees that we already have, which is, which includes the elementary school staff meetings, secondary school staff meetings, our district staff meetings, which are cabinet meetings, District Budget Advisory Council, the NEAT School Site Council, Emory Secondary School Site Council, and the Emory Secondary Parent Teacher Organization, and the District English Learner Advisory Council. So, the only one that isn't here that, is the NEAT's Parent Teacher Organization, because for whatever reason, this year, they weren't organized. And so, although they're, I met with the officers, they're just, they just weren't organized this year, and so they didn't have the opportunity to gather parents, so I just, I used the parents who were, and the information that was gathered for the NEAT School Site Council, and the parents who were from NEAT that are part of the parent district advisory, on the District Parent Advisory Committee. So, that's what the first paragraph describes, and the second paragraph describes or explains the new stakeholder committees and councils, which is basically what you heard earlier from the youth, and how they want to establish an LCAP, a youth LCAP Advisory Council. So it just explains a little bit what the Youth Together Leadership Team conducted for LCAP. There, although it says in the middle, the recommendations are in Appendix C, there will be an appendix, but it won't be letter C, it'll probably be a different appendix that will actually have Youth Together's recommendations, as well as the D-LAC recommendations, and the District Parent Advisory Council recommendations, as I described at the last board meeting. So, that second part just describes that process and what.
Ms. Allen, will I have the School Site Council also?
Say that again.
The School Site Council recommendations too?
No, I wasn't necessarily placing that, because I think the School Site Council, their attempt was to actually align what they have in their plan to what would happen in the LCAP. That was their purpose. So it wasn't necessarily, and it may be, so I don't, I just didn't, I basically attended two of their meetings, and from my understanding, it was more, they wanted to know what was happening in the LCAP so they could actually align it to their School Site Council plan when they put that forth, for, at least when they presented that to the board.
Well, they, the last time they presented, what, a meeting or two ago, they only had about three main things that they wanted to see, some of which you had in here, like a teacher, tech teacher, and I think there was one, a foreign language teacher was another one of the recommendations. But I think, I think those.
They do, so it was, it was, it was definitely, what they did recommend was definitely on the, in the second column. So I think having the appendix just to identify those three particular groups, because there, two of the parent groups are groups that we have, that we, that were mandated to actually get feedback from, and also, again, attempting to include youth voice, is just, it was, it was important to have their voice, you know, really represented in the LCAP. So that's why those three groups would have a separate appendix. But everyone else is, it talks about in the, when I get to the next column, in terms of what the critical need is, and what action step is included in the LCAP.
Okay.
And then, also in the involvement process, the next section is just future stakeholder engagement. Again, always recognizing that we would definitely want more input from parents, and have more community meetings, but really identifying that we would want to engage the Parent Teacher Organization for students in K-8, and even if they don't have an organized group, but just to def-, to get more participation from the great, those parents. And then, the last part is just the calendar of stakeholder input, feedback, and consultation that was in the last draft. So, on the right, the second column, which is the impacts on the LCAP, it just states that, the description of the goals are directly from stakeholder meetings, and as stakeholders define goals, which is in Appendix A, and clarify needs, those final needs and requests that were counted amongst all stakeholders were included in the LCAP. And therefore, the language comes directly from the LCAP sessions. So, they're not in any particular order, it's just basically, it aligns from like, for example, number one, the critical need was stated as updated curriculum, and the action step that's included in the LCAP is adopt curriculum, writing ELA, mathematics, social science, science, supplemental reading materials, acceleration intervention, English learners and students with special needs. So, based on what they felt the critical need was, this is where it occurred in the LCAP. So each number just corresponds, in terms of this is what the need stakeholders stated, and this is what action step was taking place, took place or was added in the LCAP. And then I think at the end of that one, it just states some of the outcomes for the meeting. So, what was the, what was the intent of the meeting, and just what the outcomes were? So for every meeting, there was always an outcome, whether it was a list of needs, to categorize their needs, or to now prioritize their needs in terms of what would actually be included in the LCAP. Any questions on that section? And I think that's about it.
I'm sorry, on the, the needs section, or?
No, in Section 1.
Yeah, Section 1, okay, that's right.
Before we go to Section 2.
I'm good. I mean, I'm good.
Okay, good.
And again, you know, yeah, straightforward, and you did a lot of activity, and as you said earlier, you did most, you did most of those meetings. Yeah. Yeah, then I'm blocking my beautiful chin from, from our viewers at home. All right. You don't mind, you don't mind. Anyway, thank you for all the work you did to put together all that engagement.
So next year, typically, because we didn't have a superintendent, or there were transitions, or they, they served as placeholders, next year, Dr. Rubio would, for the most part, lead a lot of this, or would do that with staff. And so, the, we just didn't have that this year, where usually you have stakeholders can actually ask questions, or they would ask questions and the superintendent needs to respond to them in writing. We just didn't, I think, my goal was to hope, was to have enough explanation. I know Mark actually explained the LCAP in staff sessions, budget advisory, the first parent, District Parent Advisory Council. So, our goal was to explain enough where they would not only feel that they were being heard, but to present it in a way where there, there wouldn't necessarily be questions due to the fact that we just didn't have a superintendent really ready and available to answer. So next year, it'll look different, because Dr. Rubio will be involved a lot. So Section 2 starts on, well, it starts on page 11 in terms of just the, the heading. So, in reading the template, the template doesn't, doesn't, and I think I stated that last meeting, it won't, you won't read it across, you actually, or horizontally, you actually read it vertically, so you have to read it for what each column represents. We cannot add any lines, so you can't add any additional lines to line it up, and that was, that's one of the, that was one of the concerns or issues about the LCAP template, because you cannot do that. So you have to type, you have to use it exactly the way it was presented to you. So in this case, you have, you must read it vertically versus horizontally. So, you'll see the identify need in ma-, in matrix, so in each column, there's the need, and then underneath it will be how we will measure that need. The second part is just the description of the goal, and because our stakeholders described our goals, it looks similar to sub-goals or objectives, we decided just to state, with the advice from our county, is just to state the general goal, and to take the other pieces out and place that in an appendix, because the stakeholders didn't, they didn't, they weren't necessarily conscious, or it wasn't, they weren't very technical in terms of how they described the goal. So, they didn't, they weren't concerned whether the goal was described as a, you know, starting with a verb, or if it looked like an objective, it was basically their interpretation of describing the goal. So in one of the sessions, the second, I believe the second one, when they had to categorize, the question was, what does this mean to you? So what, what do these three state priorities mean to you? And that's, those are the descriptions that they came up with. So it wasn't intended for a goal, it wasn't intended to be objectives, and so I want to make that very clear, because I think we tend to, when we tend to interpret it the way we want to, we actually use the, we lose what, we lose authentic voice. So I just want to make that really, really clear. The third column is students that the goal is applicable to, and for the most part, in number two, the majority of them will be, it is district-wide or LEA-wide, and then schools affected, it'll state, school, and I don't know, I may have to go back and do that again, so it has to state site, and then I'll state the school, or it'll say district-wide. And we don't have an annual update yet, and then you'll see year one, year two, year three, what will be different and are improved for students, and then related state and local priorities. So again, the local priorities were, were established in the three containers, and that's how the goals were formed. So when, so it would seem, so it'd actually be user-friendly for our stakeholders versus becoming a more complicated document. So what I'll do is just, kind of just go over the needs, and then if there's questions about those needs, we can have that discussion. So on Goal 1, the goal is all students are provided with high-quality instruction to make, to meet the new California Common Core state standards, and improve yearly academic performance, graduation rates, and post-secondary acceptance rates. So to strengthen, so that's in column 2. Then in column 1, to strengthen the instructional needs of students, we need to, A, and this here is just to ensure that we have highly qualified teaching staff, K-8, and I listed, and we listed the core subjects, and to measure that using the annual credential report as indicated in CowPads. For B, ensure that students in grades nine through 12 have access to a full teaching staff who will provide instruction for A through G college acceptance courses that are required for their graduation, and we'll do the same, the annual credential report, CowPads. For C is to increase the number of course offerings and electives by two courses per year at ESS above the one AP Calculus course that we have. And that looks like that was cut off somewhere, somehow. If anybody have it? Page 12?
Cut off.
Is there, or is everyone's cut off? It should say something underneath it to measure it. So I think that was cut off. In the printing. No, this is cut off. This is cut off. So, something happens between shifting this to a PDF, I think, and that's, that's, it just happened, Dr. Ralph, you don't, do you have that? Something happened. Did you have, you have a phone? You have it? Okay, so down.
Maybe I have to call there.
So to measure that.
Which, which column are you in?
I'm still in column 1, but I'm in letter, I'm looking for letter D, because that was cut off in terms of the matrix, so letter C, rather. To increase the number of offerings, and to measure that, it is, it's the master schedule evaluation and the annual district score report card, or scorecard.
Yeah, it's on page 13 on the PDF in the iPad.
So, the next page is 13, so this here is the next goal, goal number 2, which is all students will show, well, actually, are there any questions about Goal 1?
So, in the column, in the applicable pupil subgroups, what is, I see a A through G, A through G, J, K from column, what does all that mean? Oh. Yeah, so what does all that mean? I see, yeah, the A slash G.
You all have a lot cut off, it's cut off. So a number, so in column 1, there should be their needs that are, it's an A, it's A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, all of that, there's like a couple pages that are actually cut off. They should go to page 16. So what it means is that those, it applies to those areas of need. So, from A through G, J, K from column 1, so I'll do the second one, English learners, English learners, it applies to the letter I from column number 1.
Additional metrics. You refer to additional metrics.
So what it says, it says which pupils will it affect, right? So for instance, if you're looking at letter I, so letter I states, provide a part-time English development teacher for English learners in grades nine through 12, that only applies to letter I, number 1, for English learners. Because it, this, and this is the problem with the template, because you can't go across and read it, you have to, you have to give some type of indication so people understand what's going on. You have to go up and down, and that's the problem with the template. Yeah. No. No, we can't do any, you cannot, we cannot do anything different with this template, you must admit the template as is.
But you could color code for this meeting, and then, so thanks, black and white for them. Yes, we could have our own color-coded version.
You could, but I think.
And then, a different version for the state, and they don't care. We could, we could, we could have a completely different version, and indeed, LA County has come up with an electronic version, AXA has, that you, that spits out this, but you put in something different online, you know, so. But, but this is what we got, and this is what we're working with for this year.
So unfortunately, you all, and the other part is that when it's, the pa-, and I think, I don't, I think it's the printing from our copy machine, or, because I noticed that also, but somewhere, somehow, something is off. So, there's also, so after that, there's a, there's a letter G, which increased the number of students participating in concurrent enrollment through community college partnerships, in addition to the two courses that are already offered on campus. And then, we would look at our BCC student roster, annual district report, scorecard, report to see, to measure that. E is provide one full-time high school science teacher, again, using our annual credential reports from CowPads. F is to enroll 100% of the freshman class in the ninth-grade science course, so we would use class rosters. G is to enroll at least 50% of the 11th and 12th grade population in an AP science course, or in calculus, so again, we would look at class rosters. And then, H is to increase the number of specialty classes offered at Annie Yates' class, taught by a full-time credential teacher. So, as you all know, teachers in kindergarten through eighth grade are multiple subject, they can teach every subject. So any class that is outside of, a teacher has a full, who has a self-contained class, they're all specialty teachers. So, these are, so this is, suggestions are coming for PE or technology, but we currently have science teacher, we currently have an art teacher, and we currently have a librarian, which they're all specialty teachers. And, and there's a request for, to add two more to that. And those would be measured from their master schedule in the annual credential report. And then, I is to provide a part-time English development teacher for English learners in grades nine through 12, again, through the credential report and also our roster. J is to provide staff the opportunity for professional development in, and a lot of you have heard, teachers come and talk about these same topics, Common Core, response to intervention, differentiated instruction, and English language development. And those metrics would be looking at our professional development signing sheets, teacher and staff feedback, because after every session we have, teachers provide some sort of evaluation, and then looking at our, looking at an annual teacher survey, which we haven't done in a few years, but usually the coach used to provide an annual teacher survey to all the teachers to just give feedback for staff development. K is to be sure that our schools are safe, facilities are clean and in working conditions, so we would measure that by a local facility valuation, facility evaluation and the annual Williams, Williams review. Currently, only the high school receives the Williams review, the elementary school doesn't, because they typically make their AYP, and that's really how you, how you receive a Williams review. So, we have to, and if we are going to look at our, our elementary school site for Williams, we need to have a local evaluation, because Williams won't, doesn't address the elementary school at this time. Well, they have it for actually quite a few years.
Well, under Williams, the district is, is required to do an annual inspection of all its schools.
Yeah, but it won't be the Williams, but it won't be the Williams, it won't be the, it won't be the, no, so let me clarify.
It's not the county coming in looking at it.
Yeah, it won't be the county coming in, and they usually, that's, they call it a Williams review. So, so I just want to clarify that.
So, on, on that point, we, well, there are a couple Williams things, so on the good repair point, we need to set some metrics for each of the three years. You've got the right goal in there of a good repair goal, but, but there's no metric, and I think our metric is a hundred percent good repair each of the three years.
I'm just talking, to, no, I was saying that you note that.
Okay, noted. On the, the first one of ensuring highly qualified teachers, I think we want to change the language to what's required in the statute and the template of fully credentialed and properly assigned teachers is what the goal is. Highly qualified is a specific ESEA statutory definition, which I've spent many years litigating over with the US Department of Ed, but that's another story.
Okay, we can, because this, this definition was, the teachers at the school sites, that was their definition.
Right, but that, you know.
So, so, but we can place that down.
And, and, and similarly, the, the metric, we should establish a metric in each goal, year one, two, and three of having a hundred percent fully prepared and properly assigned teachers, which I think is our current standard, if, if I'm not mistaken. I think all our teachers are preliminary professional clear, and we don't have any teachers teaching out of field, and so. And then what we don't have is an instructional materials metric. There are certain, you know, adoptions, et cetera, referenced later, but, but a, one of the basic metrics under priority one is all kids have, you know, full, adequate and sufficient instructional materials, so. Each of a, you know, each year we should be meeting a hundred percent of that goal. Those are some of my additions, suggested additions to the, to the first part.
So John, where did you, where did you make those corrections at, or those revisions?
Which letters?
So, if you look on, on the printed version of page.
No, no, take me to the.
You want the PDF version?
I'm trying to tell all the students my notes.
Okay.
Papers, do you need papers?
All right. So goal one is, it's on twelve of the PDF, goal one A, first column. Ensured students in K have access to full, highly qualified teaching staff.
Got you.
So that's one, and I think highly qualified shows up a couple places, but that's the main one. Ms. Allen just read K was the, was the facility one, on page sixteen. Be sure our schools are safe, so is they're clean and working, so that's a fine goal, I'm just saying we need metrics in years one, two, and three that say what that is, you know, a hundred percent meeting good repair.
Right.
Do you have that for one A and three?
Are you confused, Ms. Timmer?
Well, I see Miss Allen taking notes, so I need to understand what's going on here, thinking of the board.
I am. Say that, yeah, I'm, I'm taking notes.
So, so remember, after, you saying, under K, that the metrics says local facilities evaluation, annual Williams report, use review, you saying we need to change that to read a hundred percent?
No, I'm saying, if you go into, right now, they're blank, the year one, two, and three columns across from K.
Okay, you better, okay.
So year one, we need, we need to have a, establish a, everything's a hundred percent, a hundred percent, a hundred percent. And, and there's not currently a goal in the far-left column for instructional materials.
What letter is that?
That somewhere needs to be added.
What's the letter?
Uh, you don't, you need to add it, there's no letter on instructional materials, so you want to make that.
For, is that a need, did it stated a need? Or you stating that's?
The way that, the way that you've structured it, yes. You need to add in the far-left column, a need to have all students with sufficient instructional materials. We don't have that as a stated need.
Addressing Williams.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so with that being said.
And similarly, with a hundred percent in our, you know, year one, two, three.
But if you go to I, provide a part-time English development teacher for English learners in grade nine through twelve, there's nothing in year one, two, or three as well for that goal, is that correct? On page fifteen of the PDF, number, is that I? Provide a part-time English development teacher for English learners in grades nine through I guess my question, should there be something in year one, two, and three for that goal as well?
So this is, well, no, 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 I hear, remember doing, this is why, I want to get clarification, actually, because I hear you. It's, so at the top, it says, what will be different and are improved for students based on the identified matrix. So I'm, so I'm wondering, Alpha, when you state that, so each year, what will be different or improved? That teachers will be a hundred percent qualified, a hundred percent qualified, a hundred percent qualified, that doesn't show anything different. And so this is just a difference of interpretation, which is occurring, is occurring all over the state for this. And so my interpretation was, what will be different and are improved for students is based on the description of goal one, this is what will be different for them year one, year two, year three. So if I state the same thing each year, that doesn't indicate what will be different, it just states, so there's, and this is, again, what is, to me, was wrong with the template. So when I make the, I don't read it across, I have to, I have, it's important, I have to read it vertically, because it doesn't make any, it doesn't help you, when you read this across, it doesn't make sense. So, because you would actually have the goal first, then you would have your matrix or objectives, and then you would have, how do you measure them, and then what are the, who's effect, impacted. So I just want to get any, I mean, any of the board members there, or Dr. Sugiyama, or Dr. Rubio, or Mr. Bonet, in terms of, when I see that I'm looking at year one, year two, what will be different for students, not necessarily what's in the far-left, because I just don't see that, a lot of times they're not, it's just not aligned, template isn't aligned.
The answer is yes, that, that even if it's a hundred percent, that we need, that we need to say that every year. The, the goal in the second column is really what is, and it, and it is supposed to be right across, the, the goal, you've kind of made these sub-goals out of the first metric column.
No, actually, it's not a sub-goal, it's a need. I mean, we, again, I know it's interpretation, so just from the stakeholders' perspective, that's a need, not a goal. The goal is the goal, that's it, nothing more, nothing less, the need is the need. And so, so we're just all on the same page, and I know it may, we may have to change it in the future, but at least the, when I attended the workshops or had the conversation with the stakeholders, that wasn't intended for a goal, it was basically, this is the need.
Okay, well, students have a need under the state's number-one top priority of basic services, for all kids to have access to fully credentialed teachers, sufficient instructional materials, facilities and good repair. And if we're already meeting that, great, but we do, and I had a conversation with the state board staff today on this very topic, where he reaffirmed, yes, even, even if it seems kind of like a compliance thing, it needs to be articulated that that, each of those elements are being met. And in some districts, it's not going to be a hundred percent, and that they need to, you know, have an improvement plan on how they're going to get there. And ours, it is.
So let me, let me just comment that, so I think, well, there's, there's a couple things, it's too bad the formatting issue has become a problem, because we're not able to kind of organize it, I think some of the lettering is off, but we, we can fix all those things. But essentially, there are eight state priorities, but there's really twenty-three priorities, if you count them. And so what I hear Board Member Affeld state is, for priority one, there's actually one, two, three, three components of priority one for which you need to address, the districts need to address. One is the teachers properly assigned, fully credentialed, second is pupils have access standards-aligned instructional materials, and that school facilities are maintained good repair. So we actually do need to identify a need in response to those three components. Priority two is only one, implementation of academic performance content standards. The priority three, parent involvement, really has two components, parent input and decision-making, promotion of parent participation. If you go on down the line for each priority area, pupil achievement is a good example, there are a, a number of kind of sub-priorities there, so, no, I think you're, if that's what you're saying, I think you're, what you're saying is accurate in terms of what the expectation is for districts to address. So if you're really addressing the state priorities, you have to address each component of each of the eight priorities.
Yeah, except with one caveat, that I think that it's really the, yeah, the ones that are set out in statutes, so. Yeah, I mean, I guess, I have to go back and look at statute, but your parent involvement, I don't think needs to be broken down in subcomponents, I do think of that as.
Kind of a holistic.
Yeah, an overarching, but the Williams, the school climate, and the student engagement have very specific, quantifiable, quantitative statutory metrics, you know, expulsion rates, graduation rates, school attendance rates, which we have, chronic absenteeism, I mean, the, so those three priority areas, I think are ones that do have to have the subcomponents. The other ones, I think we should address what kind of the statute generally says, but I don't think it needs to be so strict.
Okay, so, so taking that, I think that some of the, for example, in priority one, the teachers being appropriately assigned and fully credentialed has been identified as a need, pupil access to standards-aligned instructional materials, I think is addressed, but in another place. So the question in my mind is, when we look at the far-right-hand column on the template, which says related state and local priorities, we probably need to be more specific in our description of which priority the need is actually addressing, because I don't think that, in other words, the template's not organized in the order of state priorities from one through eight, it's really organized or driven by the goal. So the identified needs really are driven by the goal, but the list of needs could be addressing different state, different state priorities.
Yeah, so that's the, and I think that's the problem with the template, is that, and why everyone has different interpretations, so if it was truly clear, then I guess you wouldn't have to have all these workshops on LCAP. However, the issue is whether it's driven by the goal, or if you take, so one of the first sessions that I attended was, do not look at the state priorities and base your goals off your state priorities, otherwise you might as well just recreate a glamorized LCAP, I mean, L, LEA plan. And so that's where I think the rub is, but if we have to place it in there, we just place it in there, I guess. Any other, any other things?
Yeah, the, the, you're correct that the state wanted to give districts the leeway to define the goals, they wanted, the way they wanted to find them. However, there, there's a limit to the freedom given to districts to define the goals, because however you define them, you have to address the eight state priorities, including the sub, the subcomponents that are spelled out in statutes and priorities one and whatever engagement and climate.
So we don't, like, talk about this kind of formatting issue and not focus in on the contents, I think it would be a fair statement to say that in the next revision of this, we need to kind of look at how the needs line up to the priorities.
But I think that's what we did, the, what I'm hearing is that we need to look at what the priorities are, and we need to make sure those priorities are placed in the LCAP, because if they're truly twenty-three, you can have one, and so when someone said, when they state, make sure you have the eight priorities, you're right, it's not really eight priorities, it's twenty-three. So we need to make sure all twenty-three show up somewhere, somehow in the LCAP, so it's not necessarily, it should be driven by the goals, but in essence, if you don't state what the, all the twenty-three priorities are, then really your priorities are driving your LCAP. And I mean, it is what it is, and hopefully, the next revision of the template will, will lend itself to some more clarity.
So my, just very short editorial comment is, if these are the eight state priorities, why shouldn't they be the goals in the LCAP? And that what districts do is they look at those priorities and then identify the needs that the district has in order to respond to those priorities. I think, I just, I don't want to be too harsh in the words I use, but this template's really a little convoluted, because if the state has priorities, now, I'll tell you, the state of Hawaii, the State Board of Education of Hawaii has said, there are six strategies that all schools must address. The schools know what they are, they're written everywhere. And so what the schools do is they look at those strategies, and then they find what their needs are. To me, these priorities, these eight priorities are really what the state's saying are the goals that you need to focus on, and it would make it a much simpler process to get stakeholders to weigh in on, okay, if the first priority is basic and includes these components, then when we look at our district and what our district's needs are, based on the collection of data, what, what are the priority needs, what are the identified needs and metrics? To me, that's a much simpler, much direct focus, it still allows for looking at what the local needs are, it gives districts the, the, if you will, the control to kind of say, okay, in response to facilities maintaining good repair, here's what the needs in our district are. So that's, that's, that's my short editorial comment. I've already shared that up in Sacramento with the division director, she said, put it in email, I said, I'll do it, I don't know what'll happen with it, but, you know, anyway, so I, I'm, I'm, it would be helpful, I think, for us to continue to the content of this, but since Ms. Allen just stepped out, let me just do a process check for a There are some things that didn't show up on my template when I was doing section three, so I, I'll take responsibility for drafting section three, but I think there are some needs for which section three did not cost out what the expenditures are. So, you know, this is really kind of, in one way, the formatting problems has created what appears to be a little bit of a disjointed plan. I really think that it, because the LCAP has to be approved on June twenty-fifth, and I hate to suggest to this board, but I think we need two more bites at this, I really think we need to maybe have another study session latter part of next week, so that we can bring back and try to address the formatting issues, but to try to make the, the plan look more consistent. And we can certainly go through the rest of the contents, so the board understands where we are with this, but I think, I can, I can see already in my mind that what we need to do to kind of make the plan more understandable, because there were some components that were left out. Plus, to be honest, we didn't have time to price out some of the things, because like I said, we couldn't pull off the system, the dollar amounts to align to the, for example, all teachers who teach in the core areas, well, not all our teachers teach in the core areas. We wanted to get a report out of our escape system as to, by teachers, a list of the teachers that we identify teach in the core areas, the system's not capable of pulling that out. So we actually literally have to go in by hand and identify, all right, Sarah Stoneman doesn't teach core classes, but Mr. Miles, Mr. Miles does, and therefore, what is his total compensation? And we have to literally take a calculator and hand calculate across the page, salary, salary-driven costs, health benefits, to really have an accurate cost in the column. So that, those are some of the logistics we're trying to deal with. I guess it's kind of a way of saying, we need a little more time with this, I'm not comfortable in going from tonight to the twenty-fifth of June and say, here is the plan, I really think we need to try to clean up as much of those. I really think we need to try to clean up as much of those kinds of issues before the board gets it on the 25th of June. So, just want to do that as a process, kind of.
No, I, I agree 110% because I guess where I'm kind of getting confused is, does each priority have to be in a goal? Because I see the priorities here, and the goals are here, and I'm hearing you guys talk, but I'm just kind of, when you say there's eight, but there's really twenty-three, so that, does that mean that each priority has to go into every goal?
Each, each, I think twenty-three might, there might be twenty-three clauses, but they're, they're probably fifteen or fourteen or something. And I think those fourteen do need to be in the LCAP somewhere. So they need to be organized under at least one of the goals set out.
The, the priorities?
The, those.
Those eight.
Those eight to fourteen.
Okay, so eight to fourteen, okay, all right, okay.
And that, and that, you know, if, I think you're right, there needs to be a need associated with whatever we're setting a, a goal on. And, and I guess, there's the goal from column.
Two.
Two, but then I'm, I'm, I'm thinking of annual goal, of, you know, columns, the year one, year two, year three columns, where we actually are saying, what are we going to do to achieve, make sure that we have facilities in good repair, that we're improving on our graduation rates, we're reducing our expulsion rates, we're improving our student attendance. I think those are, those are metrics that need to be somewhere in the LCAP, under one of the goals.
Right. The other piece we're working on is kind of refining the metrics. So let me just give you example of one that we covered already on page twelve. The, with, with reference to, I think it's a good suggestion to change the language that, that actually appears in the legislation, but, so if we say, ensure that students and Kaid have access to a fully credentialed and properly assigned teacher, whatever the exact wording is, the metric really is, the county does an audit every year of our teachers, whether they're, they're fully, they're credentialed or misassigned, and that's done annually, and that would be, in my mind, the metric. So that 100% of our teachers are found through a county, annual county audit on assignment of teachers shows that our teachers are properly assigned.
Right.
And that would be a metric that would carry over every year. It's not a matter of improvement one year and the next, it's like 100%.
Right.
First year 100%, second year 100%. So we'll, in the next version, kind of refine the metrics to fit, to, to really address the statement of need in more specific terms.
Right. And the fully credentialed is a different metric, because you might be on emergency credential, but you're not misassigned, because you have the authority under the emergency credential. So, you know, fully credentialed means preliminary professional clear.
Right. And we don't have any emergency credential teachers, so, but we may need to reference that and clarify that.
So I think we're 100% fully credentialed in this district.
So are you proposing to finish this and then come back again? Are you proposing to stop now and then revise and then come, come back later for another meeting?
Well, I can, there, there, I mean, I think the contents are here, I think the critical common, column in my mind is the first column on the left, what identified needs are. As I said, we'll, we'll be taking a look at revising the metrics appropriate to the need, and then I think staff needs to take a look at the degree with state priorities. So I was told today, but then I didn't get back from Sacramento until like five o'clock, so I didn't have a chance to totally brief staff on what I heard. But what I heard, not from the state folks, but from our person who works in the WASC office that is working with the state on the LCAP, is that the twenty-three, and they counted, and they, they asked the state director, how many actually are there? And I, because I counted twenty-three, and she said, that's about right. So our kind of, my takeaway from that is, we really need to make sure, and the county didn't say this, but that's okay. My takeaway was, we need to make sure that we have needs identified that actually address the twenty-three components of the priorities.
Okay.
And I don't think, and I think we, we've covered quite a few of them, but I think there are some that we probably need to think a little bit about, like the school facilities issue. And so, I mean, I think that's something that we, we could work on over the next week and address. So I, I don't know, I know Ms. Allen has not been well, and so I don't know that there's, I don't know, Dr. Rubio, there's something else you want to say about section two? I would be prepared to kind of at least go over what we've done in section three so far.
And I would, I would like to see the dollar figures along with the.
I don't think there's, there's anything I want to add about section two. I just wanted, I just want to think about the calendar for a moment, if we're looking at next week, and I know we can work this out among staff, but I'm, I'm also wondering, I'll just say what I'm thinking out loud, maybe Superintendent Sugiyama and I can, if we, I'm even wondering if we can get something back to you by the end of the, I don't know, I don't know when we will be meeting. I, I was trying to figure out if, do we have time to get something to you, to get your feedback before we meet, and, or not? And I don't know if we can do that, but maybe that's something we can, we can try.
Well, I mean, I think, just to kind of digress to the calendar for a moment, part of the problem is if we schedule the meeting for next Thursday, let's say, it doesn't, it's not going to give us much time to make those revisions. The trade-off on the other end is if we were, if the board were available and we're able to do a study session on Monday, the 23rd, I believe it is, the board meeting, of course, is two days later, so that would mean that if there are any final revisions to be made to the plan, the staff would have to do it on the 24th. So I think it's a question of, I would have to defer to my staff colleagues as to whether or not it would, it's better for us to have more time on this front end over the next week and try to get to the next revisions by next Friday, it would be.
Well, and I was, I was almost, and I was wondering, I don't know if we could, if we could pull this off in terms of staff, or not, but if we, I was even wondering, can we get revisions to them by the end of the day, Wednesday, the 18th, and ask for feedback by the end of the day, Friday? So that if you have some specific feedback where, that, I know it doesn't give you much time as well, but it would be good for us to have that before we meet in person again. I know it's a short timeline for us and for you, but I'm just thinking that it would probably help us on the 23rd, and, you know, just so that we have your feedback, so that we can go ahead and add that during the day on the 23rd and make any other changes before we meet in study session again.
So I'll, no, I'm not here on the 23rd, but I'm, I'm, you don't need me. But I think it's important for Member Affeld, who has a, a close pulse, as well as Member Dwayne and the other board members, so if you do, go for it with the 23rd.
Well, I mean, I'm fine with that, Dr. Rubio, but for me, even if I get on the 18th, I'm going to have to sit down with somebody and go over it. So, I mean, the 18th is fine with me.
So I, I just, just to not try to solve that, the timing question, but I would offer, perhaps, even if we set a meeting to, and we got those documents in front of us to review, because it's a draft, it's a study session, I mean, it's not like we always have things we need in front of us right before a meeting or days before, but, I mean, I don't know if, if there's interest to have a Thursday meeting, the staff take us through the documents that they've prepared, and we have that. Because essentially, that's kind of what we're doing now, just because of the formatting in so many ways. So, I mean, I just offer that as a thought, if we were to do it next Thursday.
On Thursday the 19th?
Yeah, but, you know, that's just a.
Or Friday the 20th.
Or Friday the 20th.
You know, I mean, instead of going over, instead of writing down comments and emailing to you, we could meet on the 20th and, and go over them.
Later in the day?
Yeah.
I think I got a, I got an engagement on 20, but I, I, you know, I'm good.
If you got it, if you got it to us.
So the 20th is a possibility?
Yeah.
Either day, I won't be available till 6:30.
Well, that's good for me, that time's good, 6:00, 6:30. Is that good for you, Member Affeld?
I, I would do it, you know.
You prefer earlier?
Well, if we're going to do six, I mean, I could do 6:30 either night, but I would, I, I prefer to try to keep the Fridays for the family, but, but I'll do it if Friday is the one that makes sense for staff.
Thursday's not good for you?
I could do Thursday.
What about you, Kristin?
Both days work for me, I'm pretty open.
Thursday's not good for you? So Thursday won't work for Ms. Allen?
So, so, so Friday, the 20th?
Yeah.
And, and, but you can get us another revision, you get us another revision on, by the end of the day, Wednesday, or?
I'd like to make that our goal, if we can, if we can get something to by the, end of the day on Wednesday, that will give you some time to even give us feedback before Friday, if you're willing.
Yeah, I think this is more to staff, because we're kind of a study session informal. That means we're going to have to block out like maybe all-day Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, and it, quite honestly, it's been with the close of school and all the other events, it's been hard for the, certainly the three of us, along with Mark, for all four of us to be able to carve out like six hours at a block to go through this. So, since tomorrow is, or today is the last day for students, and I think we're going to have to look at calendar next week, and we're going to really have to kind of look at where we can block out kind of chunks of time. If, if the goal is to send to the board the next revision by Wednesday evening.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And then, did I, I guess I'm, I'm having trouble hearing, because I don't hear people coming through the speaker, but, so is the plan then to meet in a special meeting on Thursday, or Friday?
Friday.
Friday, after, 6:30 PM.
Right. You can't do, you can't do Friday.
I'm good, it's, it's the 27th, but I got, oh yeah, I'm good, the 20th, yeah.
So Mark's not good the 20th.
Can you beam, can you beam yourself here?
But if you can get the numbers, before then, I think that's, I think it's more important for you to have put your number input into it going in.
Right.
Because I, I mean, if we have questions on numbers, we can get those to you, but it'd be my.
And then we have that next bite of the apple, as that phrase goes on the.
So I have some, some other general comments, not super extensive, on the goals and a few on the actions.
Related to section two?
Yeah.
Okay.
And can I just do a time check? We have 20 minutes before, excuse me, 25 before 11, so I just want to, I want to raise that, because Melody's time is about to fall asleep, so.
Yeah.
I just want to throw that out, not fall asleep, but you know.
I'm with you.
Getting tired, so that's all.
Yeah.
I'm sure everybody.
So, why don't I set these out pretty quickly, and then if people have questions, me and I get them in, or, or staff can kind of follow me later, but I, I think they're pretty straightforward. I, I thought that the, there's pupil achievement goals in both big goal one and big goal two just seem to be, and, and I'm not suggesting necessarily a change, but just kind of reflect and think about it, that it, in some ways, it seemed that the logic of the three big goals, i.e. those set forth in the second column, track the, kind of the logic of the, how the template divided up the eight priorities between conditions of learning, pupil achievement and outcomes, and then parent and student engagement. I don't know if that was the intention of how to put the stakeholder feedback together, but those, so it would seem that, that you might think about putting all of the achievement goals and then actions and expenditures in the next section, under one goal, like that's goal one is the achievement, and then goal two is, or maybe goal one is the conditions of learning, and goal two is all the achievement stuff. There just, there just seem to be some crossover there, but, but again, that, I'm, that is just a suggestion.
It is crossover, no? It is crossover, and it was intentional, because a lot of times when teachers look at the achievement goal, and even when you look at a formative or assessment, you're still looking at like benchmarks, benchmark assessments. So if you see one, there's one matrix in terms of, the second part is talking about RTI and access to intervention, that's very, it's a different sort of measurement versus the first one, which is basically your online assessments, the SBAK or the CAS, where in the second goal, it's referring more to students on that tier two. So it's, so when it's the RTI, and you have the tier one, tier two, tier three, goal one is referring more to the students who are, who receive services at tier one, which is your core instruction, and goal two, two, it's referring to the students who receive tier, tier two, instructional intervention services or acceleration services. So I think that, I think when the teachers did this, that was an intent, that was intentional.
Okay.
Let me add something, though. That being said, I think we'll still go ahead and look at it, what you're saying, because I, I get your suggestion that we might, we'll go ahead and look at it and determine, should we leave them with the overlap, or maybe are they better set apart?
Yeah, okay, and all the goals that are set with, you know, specific metrics, year one, year two, year three, in goal two, go, the goal two's, was, the big goal two was about both academic and also kind of socio-emotional aspects and growth, right? Which I like, I really, I like that. But all the actual goals, when you look at the metrics, relate only to academic stuff, and there weren't really very thin goals about what are we doing to, you know, improve the socio-emotional learning, and how are we going to measure that? Yeah, I mean, there's a peacemaker participation, but I, you know, like improved peacemaker participation rates, are there any other improvement measures, or is there stuff on wellness, or how we're going to, you know, maybe it's surveys, measure?
So, so you're talking about, are the, are the metrics aligned to the big goal?
Yeah.
In the same section?
Right, yeah, and that we, we.
The socio-emotional learning, you see in goal three. So, so the intent for goal two, what you see, the socio-emotional learning is, so it's, so goal two is not socially-emotional learning, what it is, is students will show growth academically and socially, that's a little different in terms of, and that's why I wanted the description of the goal to stay there, but it's still confused everyone here, and why it's in an appendix. So the intent for that was just to talk about students would be able to be critical thinkers, they socially, they would, it was, it was more socially, in terms of how they are socially in, in academics, but I don't, but again, this is based off what the stakeholders, their, their intent was more of thinking about RTI and formative assessments and, and students having access, where goal three lends more to more of the wellness. But, but now, without having the description of the goal, you have now even more confusion. So before, there was confusion, because I described the goal, and now the goal is not described, and now there's still more confusion. So, so again, the more we do this, the more diluted the stakeholder voices become, because we're trying to make sense of it ourselves versus just letting it almost ride, at least year one, based off of what the stakeholders described it as. So I mean, we can change it, however, and look at it, but at the end of the day, it will be this group who will end up changing this and not necessarily creating, you know, from, in my opinion, really staying true to what stakeholders defined it as. But this is where the confusion comes from.
So, let's, let me ask a question, so I can understand the document as a whole. So staying there where we're at, so we're seeing that goal two, to demonstrate academic and social emotion growth in, in learning, students will need, so is.
So we're, we're looking at the next column over from that, the big goal.
Okay, so that's the big goal?
Yeah.
Okay. All students will show consistent growth academically, socia, and socially, demonstrating the ability to think critically, be kind, understanding, yada, yada, yada. So that's the goal. Now, the, to demonstrate academic and social emotional growth in learning, students will need, that's the need? Okay, let me ask you this, how does that relate to the goal?
So, in this case, I can clearly see what, where the confusion is, remember doing, because it doesn't look like it relates to the goal, but that's why the goal is described. See, when the goal is described, you could then start to relate why, why stakeholders stated that was a need, but as soon as we took out the, the description, because. But as soon as we took out the, the description, because everyone wanted to make that sub one, goal two, sub goal three, sub goal A, B, C, now, we have to therefore go and redefine the goal, so the goal will make sense with the needs. But it's just, it just, after a while, you just end up changing everything, so it can make sense. But at the end of the day, this is a project that we're building the plane while we're flying it. That's all, that's.
So, Ms. Allen, like, I actu- I, I, I don't agree with your prior critique that, that we're, um, necessarily diluting. I, I'm trying to actually express, in the expectation of the county and the state, what, what our big goal two is here. And, you know, when, when I look at the expanded goal, where you, you sort of explained that, you had, you know, a point one and a point two, and the point one is the academic side of the big goal two. Formative assessments, hands-on projects, report, and then point, two point two, students are able to demonstrate skill development and citizenship, community participation, life skill activities, career awareness and training, uh, et cetera. Those, those are things, I'm just saying, w- we don't need to put them in subbullets. I think they belong in the year one, year two, year three columns, where we have some metric that says, this is how we're measuring citizenship and community participation, and this is what we're gonna look for in year one, year two, and year three, in, in that respect, and that's how we're gonna know that we're moving on that big goal, both aspects of that big goal two.
Well, so, let, let's, um, and, and I'm going to rely on Anna Kritas and, and Dr. Rubio to, um, as we think about the, the feedback we got from the county. One of the reasons why the goals, the three goals, got shortened was because I think the feedback from the county reader was that some of the components of the goal description sounded like needs. Isn't that what Ingrid said? So therefore, she said, well, if they're not the needs, if it's really the goal, just take those out and just go with the global statement.
You know, I think hers was more of, it would be subgoals. So what she wanted to see was like, goal two, and then goal two point one, goal two point three, goal two point four. Where because it was in that column, a lot of districts stated the goals, but they didn't necessarily describe their goal. They described the goal by stating another goal. And so, in this case, um, I mean, I understand what member Alphata stated. Basically, if we're stating that, measure everything. And so what, what didn't come up for stakeholders is, it wasn't critical to measure that. It was, this is the goal, this is what we think we need from the goal, and if it's not in there, we think we already have it together.
No, but I think the conversation I recall with, uh, Ingrid was that, when they read the elaborated goal, which was the template they reviewed, she did say, like, what, what was in appendix A now, two point one, two point two. And, and I didn't number them for the sake of suggesting they're subgoals, because when we talked about it, it was all part of the whole goal. But I think what Ingrid said was that, but you're not gonna have metrics tied to these. And so if you're not having metrics tied to these, that you should just take those out.
Yeah, because it's the way it's written. So when we are, as, when we just think of a goal as it has to be written a certain way, it still looked like a goal. That's why it was taken out. So stakeholders, again, they're not concerned whether, oh, does it read like a goal? Does it read like a narrative? Does it read, you know, perfect? It was just, that's how we described the goal. And so we took that out, because it, it became confusing to anyone, whether it was county or here, that it looked like it was another goal, or a subgoal, or an objective. And that was the reason, that was, I mean, it's, it's a combination of everything why it was taken out, because it was just too confusing.
Well, the county was clear that you, it's confused, you should take it out, because they said, those aren't your needs, are they? And we said, well, no, the needs are in column one.
But now, when you read it, and you don't have the description, and you look at the needs, you're trying to figure out, well, how does this goal relate to this need? But I understand what member Alphata's stating, is that if we're stating this is what it is, then how do we measure it? Although the stakeholders didn't identify that need to be measured, whatever needs to be measured, we can measure it. So if that's an area, we just put it in there, and we need to measure it.
So, so that, I would say either we, yeah, that we put it in and measure it, so we know we're delivering. And a county's gonna be looking for that. Or if it's just part of our mission, and we think we're gonna be doing that by doing the academic-measured piece, then, then that's, we just focus on the, the first part of it that's academic and measured. But I'm, I'm perfectly happy having some metrics in there of citizenship, community participation, or.
Okay, so, but again, I just want to reiterate this, and that my, wh- what I understood was, when they read our draft, they said that some of the things you have in the goal statements sound like needs. But we had a separate column where there were identified needs. And so, I think the confusion, well, at least, what I heard from the county was, they were confused as to whether the goal, the elaborated goal, really was the needs, or whether the needs are in column one. Uh, I, I, help me with this, Anna Kritas, but I don't think we, because we don't need to identify metrics for the goals. We need to identify metrics for the identified needs, right?
That was correct, that's correct.
So therefore, if we started developing metrics for, uh, students are able to demonstrate citizenship, community participation, that's not really what the process is about, is it? It's not about identifying metrics for the goal. It's about, it's about, based on the goal, identifying what the needs are, and then identifying metrics for the needs.
And you say the county's gonna hold us to, to showing growth on the needs?
So tell me if I, I didn't hear it.
Could you repeat that for me? Could you repeat what you said, because I lost you for a second?
Okay, so, m- my understanding of what the county said is, they read our goals, and they said, well, some of the parts of your goals sound like needs. And so, is that your intention? We said, no, and, cause Anna Kritas kept saying that the entire description of the goal is really the entire description of the goal, it was never intended to create a set of subgoals. The needs in column one, in our previous draft, as well as this one, are the needs that the stakeholder groups identified in response to the goal. So, that's what you develop metrics for, to, you develop metrics to assess the degree to which you're meeting the need, not the goal. And it's a little bit of semantic discussion, but I mean, I think that, I, for me, the county was very clear that, and that's why they, they recommended, take out all those bullets that you had under goals, because someone might read it and think, well, those are your needs, so why don't you have metrics for it? That was, and that was not our intent.
So, as I'm listening, okay, as I'm listening to you, just trying to see if there's a way to get out of this, this bug. If you substituted the word need for, where is there a gap? So you've got goals, and where is, where are you not meeting the goals? That's where you wanna have a metric. Is that what I'm hearing? Cause that's what it sounds like. And, and if, I think that thinking might help clarify and, and move it forward.
I think that is good thinking. Well, of course, we can't say that, because that would be changing the template, and that's illegal.
So, I.
Yeah, no, no, no. Yeah, yeah, I'm being facetious, yeah, absolutely. That's the identified need and metric is, where's, where's the gap?
I'm gonna jump in here a second and, and try not to stir the pot more. I'm hearing a couple of things, and one of the things I'm definitely hearing is that, given the constraints of the end of the year and the transition, there hasn't been a lot of time for the, I'm gonna call them the two superintendents, to wordsmith this as much as they would like. But now they've set aside that time next week. And then the second thing that I keep coming back to is, while we're stuck with this template, and we can argue about its quality over and over again, I'm gonna say on the record, the state has done a wonderful job and provided us with an excellent tool that we're going to use. However, we can have an infinite amount of supporting documentation. It's why I like the appendices, and I like the other things, even color coding it for us, to then take it out when we submit it. We, we have options. If we fixate on the template and what's wrong with it, we're not gonna get anywhere. But if we fix, fi- think about a few minutes of, what's the workaround? How can we explain this in terms that, you know, and I don't care about the six of, the five of us up here, that the community can understand it, and we can use an infinite amount of other, um, tools. You know, my district, the template was a hundred and three pages that nobody's ever going to read, but they did a nice eighteen-page summary in their own format. And so, I really feel like if we take some time and, and give you guys time to just wordsmith this, because I think it's clear to me, you understand the limitations of what we can do with it. But really, spend some time, hammer it out. I think you've gotten a sense from Mr. Alphelt, what he wants to see in there. Take the time and get it back to us, and then we'll read it and come back for, you know, another study session.
So member Pat's just stated, so they're having other versions that, that stakeholders, that's, those are, those are the graphic organizers they use to actually do this work, and so why I never started out, why we never started out with the template in the first place. So that has happened to a certain extent. The second piece is that, we have to get this passed by the county. And I think we need to, in terms of bandwidth, my goal is to get it passed by the county. Next year, we can color code it, we can place it around the room for all I care. But right now, I think what Dr. Sukiyama's stating is, the three of us attended a session at the county that where they gave us feedback.
Right.
Right?
But that's the cart before the horse. Before you can take it to the county, you gotta get it passed to us. And that's where we're bogging down.
I mean, just personally speaking, I, I'm having a really hard time reading this. I'm gonna go home, I'm gonna cut it, I'm gonna paste it, I'm gonna tape it, so it's one big, long document, and then I'm gonna color code it myself, just so that I can have an easier time reading it. That's just how my brain will work that way. So, I, I feel that at least by the next time we have this conversation, I will understand it better. But I'm having a hard time just following.
I mean, yeah, I attended three, I attended three or four workshops to understand this.
I'm sure.
So it's not, it's not easy to understand, and, and in terms of time, we do have to think about the county has to pass it. Because if, if, even if we pass it in a format that we thought was clear, if they don't pass it, we have to still come back and rework it and.
No, I, I understand, but i- i- in my own seat here, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying, yeah, you've got my, you've got my approval when I'm having a hard time following it. So that's just my own process, is I'm gonna go home tonight and cut it and tape it and color it up, so that I can understand it better.
Reproduce that.
Maybe.
And let me, and let me just add, um, uh, we may have to figure out the printing thing tomorrow for you first, just so you know. Just to remind you that. You may not have a good, a, a good enough paper version for that.
Lisa, I'm gonna come see you tomorrow.
Print your PDF.
I have a question. Is there any way that we can create this template in a Word document? And then, kind of?
It is Word.
Oh. I mean, wa- is there any way that we could, you know, kind of reformat this, you know? Not in the template for the state, but maybe somehow copy this, or do something to make it a little bit easier to read?
You mean, line up, so you can read across it?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so could I just try to get closure a little bit on section two, unless you have some questions regarding the specific needs in column one? I think part of the hangup with this, we can't change the template, so I'm not gonna complain about it.
No.
But the point is, really, column, the column two should be column one. The, the, the. The problem here is that, but setting that aside, the most really important columns in section two is the far column on the left that identifies the needs of the metrics, and how we, are things are gonna be different for kids over the three years. Those are the important columns. And I, I just, I'm saying that because I don't want us to get too hung up on, well, are the needs really aligned to the goal statement? You know, that's not the kind of thing that's gonna cause the county not to approve our plan. And those are the kind of revisions that the district can make as you, because there is a, you know, there's a revision process that districts can go through, right?
Yeah, the other thing is that, understand, in column one, you all can't afford everything here, we can't. So to have us go back and redo ev- do all of this for each need, some of these needs won't be in here. And, and where I would hope that we would get to, instead of being caught up, is that John actually provided chart papers, so we can get through some of the priorities that the board had. Because all of this, some of this will be taken out anyway. The only thing that we can address are, is in goal one. So whatever the needs are, is what we need to address, and I, and I guess to state out the HSA priorities or the twenty-three priorities, we have to state that. But some of this in here, you all have to make a decision. It won't, we can't, you won't be able to fund it. And so, to have us go back and, and recreate a lot of work, when we haven't gotten to the real, real, the real decision-making. We'll get here June twenty-fifth, and we'll still talk about the template, and you all haven't made a decision.
Okay, all right, well.
So let me, let me just, though, say one thing about that. My, my, and, and I'm prepared to facilitate a prioritiz- prioritization process, but my only concern, Anna Kritas, I'm not sure, because of the copy I got, I, I'm almost feeling like I'm missing some of the needs. And what I did was, I wrote section three based upon the template I have, and I think there were some things left off it potentially. That, that's the only reason. Now, the prioritization process really will only take forty minutes. So, what I'd like to do, propose we do, is we address any other questions or comments around the content of what you are seeing here. And then, let me go through section three, so you understand what the format is. Understand that we'll refine the numbers, in some cases, add numbers to it. And then, I want, I do want to just briefly talk about the parcel tax appendus- appendices. And then I'll, I'll tell you, I'll explain to you in five minutes what the prioritization process is, so you can begin to think about, uh, even some of the things listed on this draft. And, so when we meet Friday, we can go through the prioritization process, because, um, uh, Mr. Bonet's gotta finish the budget. Since ALCAP and the budget have to be, have to be adopted together, there will be some implications to the adopted budget that will be driven by the decisions you make on the priorities. So, really, the goal is to have the board agree on what the priorities are for funding, uh, by next Friday evening.
Great, that sounds good.
So.
I, I had one substantive response, um, that's pretty specific. I, I do not like the language in, somewhere in goal three, it's on page fifteen, of, uh, hold parents accountable to support their children's education. It, it just came across like we're trying to be the parent, good parent police. And I think we should be clear about our expectations of parents, and what our needs are as a district for their support, and we should do what we can to support them, but I, I didn't like the, that partic- particular language, so if we could edit that.
Okay, we can address that.
Yeah, that came from a parent group who was, um, basically, basically stated that.
Well, we wanna use them to do that.
It's probably one of those, the parents are the toughest on parents, right?
Yeah, they can be very good, and, but that's, not necessarily for the board to, uh, be doing that. The, I have, like, specific actions, or points on, um, actions, but I, you know, probably just email you, John and John. I mean, I just like two points, but, so I don't wanna bog us down here, uh, cause they're not as substantive. And I, I did, I, I, I did really like the parcel tax sheet, so.
So John, you gonna take us through the next section?
Okay, so, uh, so let me just tell you how we frame section three. So, if you look at, and section three starts on page, um, twenty? Yes, page twenty. And this is, I didn't change the template, so you have the, the goal number referenced in the column, the far left column. You have the related state and local priorities that are identified by number. And then you have the action and services. So the action and services, that third column, really was intended to mirror what was in column one in section two. Okay? The identified needs. Now, Anna Kritas and I talked about this, some of the identified needs in column two don't necessarily specifically define the action. So there was a little bit of, if you will, editorial license, and this is another thing that Dr. Rubio and Anna Kritas and I have to look at. But, but ultimately, the priorities that the board needs to establish are for, for those actions and services listed in column three, or the third column from the left. Again, with a caveat that there might have been some things that I missed in the translation from, from section two. So I, I wanna just then, as you can see, that the three important columns then that follow are, what actions are performed, services provided, and what's the anticipated expenditures for each action, including the funding source. So, uh, I'm not gonna go through all three columns, other than to illustrate what happens with some of the staff, um, staff act. some of the staff, staff actions. So we already talked about A, provide quality, provide fully credentialed and properly assigned teachers for core subjects. We just need to define what the cost is. It's probably gonna be in the millions of dollars. And what are the funding sources, LCFF basic grant, general fund, or general fund, Title I parcel tax, are like, the likely three sources of funding for that. But I wanna go to the next line. So the next one says, provide a full-time PE teacher. That's NE8s. And in 1415, the expenses, certificate salaries and benefits. And I wanna explain the number 103,727. In our teacher's contract, teachers can get a certain amount of credit for years of service and the number of credits they've earned beyond their BA. And so that drives where they're placed on the salary schedule. Under the current contract, the, we have pegged this amount at the maximum sal, maximum cost that a potential hire would cost the district. So this is a fairly ultra-conservative. Teachers can come in with 10 years of experience, which means they can come in on step 11. Do we often hire a teacher that comes in getting the full amount of service credit? Probably not. However, if you peg the cost at a lower step on the teacher's salary schedule, and you find this outstanding candidate's had 10 years of experience, then you're gonna underbudget for that. So we thought it's better to err on the side of, this is the maximum exposure in terms of cost in the first year. And the 103 represents, the top salary at that step is $74,727. We added 13% salary-driven costs, which are workers' comp, STERs contribution, unemployment insurance, those things. And then on top of that, we added what the health benefits would cost at full coverage, at the most expensive coverage. That's how we got to 103. And if you go across, the following year, it goes 106, and the year after, 107,9. And that represents, we just, for purposes of projection, built in a 2% adjustment to salary, as opposed to keeping it a flat amount, which is kind of for purposes of budgeting. So that's how we got that number. You see the sources, the sources for, for funding that position. So as you go down, you look, for example, next, the full-time technology teacher, counselor to provide college guidance or administrative support, you see those personnel costs. Now, we, ultimately, when the board does the prioritization, decides how they're gonna spend at least the $240,000 in supplemental concentrated grant monies, it's possible, let's just say hypothetically, you were saying, we think these two positions are really important. So we go out and we say, okay, but we're gonna have to think about that. It may cost $206,000, 103,000 twice. But let's say then we go through the process of hiring those positions, and lo and behold, instead of costing 206,000, it's really only 170,000. So then you have basically identified another $30,000 that's unallocated, that could be used to fund a priority that you weren't able to fund before. And that would be a revision that you would make to the plan at that point. So I, we think it's far better to overestimate the cost, the maximum exposure, and then if there's dollars that are freed up, then the board has the opportunity to then go down the list of priorities and identify other things to, to be able to fund. Going down the line, curriculum adoptions, the proposal is to focus on writing next year. We estimate the cost at 20,000. Supplemental materials for that particular need F, we're estimating $10,000, and you can see the funding source, in that case, is Common Core Implementation Grant. The, and that's to address F and G, the $10,000. So you can see in that first column, it says F and G from column one. So again, this is the alignment issue across the page, but that, we won't dwell on that. H, provide more AP online electives, courses, four sections, is what I think section two says, two AP classes and two elective classes. What we did for this one is we costed out one section at ESS, cost $16,745. We did not, at that point, calculate what the health benefits are, only because it depends if you hire a full-time teacher, or you, if, if you can hire a, you know, if you hire a part-time teacher, then the health costs will be prorated accordingly. I is about professional development in each of those six identified areas. And the focus in the first year that is proposed is professional development for four of those areas, including special ed. The, the estimated cost would be about $60,000. Again, that would come from Common Core, combination Common Core Implementation, Title II and parcel tax. G, at the very bottom, for goal two, so it's the first one aligned to column one in section two for goal two, purchase Chrome laptops. The proposal's purchase 10 laptop carts with 30 Chromebooks. And each cart with 30 Chromebooks, we estimate the price at about $9,500, so 10 would cost 95,000. Doesn't mean you have to buy 10, but that's, that would be what the cost is for the proposal of 10, 10 fully equipped carts. Student information system, I think those numbers are pretty good. In the first year, $10,000, the second, third year is the annual license fee. The wellness, fund wellness staffing and behavior management. Team stipends, which is tied to C in column three, we estimate the cost to be $15,000. Going down to, actually, that 15,000 is to address C and D in column three. The college guidance materials, E on the next page, implement a program for 912, develop a program for 68. Primarily, it's the cost of the materials, that's estimated $5,000. Goal three, provide parent workshops and training. We need to, we look at these numbers, but the initial estimate was 2,500 for A. And for B, the, the estimated expense is $7,500. And so for the areas, for the action and services identified in section two, at least for the ones that I had on my hard copy of section two, that's how we kind of basically created section three. For redesignated, for redesignated fluent English proficient students, the expenses and sources for the funding are actually in the first section on, in the section for EL learners and for low-income students. Which is why the actual dollar expenditures are not in, so I'm looking at page 29 on the hard copy. So for the redesignated fluent English proficient students, the dollar amounts are not included there because they're addressed in either of the two previous groups, or one of the previous groups.
Yeah, so on, I guess on 3B there, I'm not sure that it works and satisfies the transparency intent to have all of 3B be addressing goals one, two, and three together. And that, that we should separate out which, which of the 3B actions pertain to which of the goals.
Okay.
I think the other, some of, some of my comments that I was gonna send you, you, you kinda touched on, on the actions generally. I don't, I don't think that there are actions for all aspects of the column one needs from section two goals. Right? So like, we identified clean, safe facilities, but we didn't have any actions or expenditures associated with that, is one example that came to mind. And there, there might have been, as you said, there might have been other things that you didn't line up. So I would just double-check to see that we have goals and actions on all, everything in that need column. And, and it seemed to me that, that nearly all the, all the things, particularly in the expanded goals, in, under goal one, I thought that's a pretty good description of our core program, is goal one of the expanded goal appendix. And that, that many of those things could, you know, well be actions that are in 3A.
Okay.
And that, that have expenditures next to them. And you put that stuff in there, you will satisfy the, the requirement of reflecting nearly all of our LCFF expenditures. Does that make sense?
A little bit, a little bit, a little bit.
John, John, you seem not to.
I'm sorry, can, can.
It doesn't seem to make sense.
Can you, can you restate that, please?
I was gonna ask you to say it again, too.
Okay. So my last point here was that on this appendix A, LCFF, LCAP expanded goals, just the goal one, and not necessarily, not necessarily goal two or three, but goal one in particular, I thought, is a very good definition of our core educational program.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that nearly all of these sub-points could be actions in 3A with expenditures associated with them that, that reflect 80% of our district, well, we spend our money on.
Let me get back to 3A, okay.
And that. And I'm, and I'm, and some of them should already be in there.
Some, yes.
Already. But we, but maybe we can, what we can do, I think, is go ahead and check these.
Yes, right.
Okay. To be, make sure we're being comprehensive on your previous points that you've made in other meetings that address the same topic.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So John, are you saying that some of the appendix expanded goals that are here could actually go into the action and service areas of 3A?
To, to the extent we're providing them.
Okay.
Now, yeah, I mean.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And tax dollars, okay.
Yeah. I mean, if we're not providing them, then they're a need that we need to.
Right, 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 right.
Be identifying, as Carol said, a gap to achieving goal one, and, and then it's a.
I'm understanding it a little bit better now, how to go about it.
But, but I mean.
It's a description, so I think John wrote expanded goals, it's just a description. However, in that description, it actually captures some of it. So I just wanna make sure we don't, we don't get that caught up, so we don't, we don't go back to the goal and try to create metrics for the goal. It just happens to be that in this description, it actually describes goal one a lot thoroughly, in your opinion, versus the other two goal, other goals? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, in particular, yeah, I thought that, that many of these points describe what we are doing, sort of our core educational.
But we'll go back and look at those.
Yeah.
Because it's not said, some of those couldn't be added as action or services. That wasn't the intent, I think, is what I hear Anna Creed say, but.
Yeah.
And many of those things are in there.
It's like, maybe those things should be actions and services.
Okay.
Under 3A, that kinda, 3A is the general ed program, 3B is the supplemental concentration, what are you doing over and above the general ed program for your high-needs student.
Okay, now, everything's coming, it's being clear now. Okay. I got it.
Our next question.
Okay, so I'm starting, understanding how the staff is going to go about revising section two, and then which will drive changes to section three. So appendix C was the first stab at trying to align the state priorities to the parcel tax. And one of the reasons why we did this is because our total budget, as you remember this evening, is 9.8987, 9.897 million dollars. But of that, 2.5 comes in parcel tax. So that's, that's quite a large percentage of our, our total revenue. So, and obviously, as the board is aware, the parcel tax is used to support actions and services that really do align to the state priorities in many cases. So this is, of course, we designed this template, it wasn't, it's not a template we got from anywhere, but it seemed to capture what we thought were the most important things. So which goals are we addressing? What are the related state and local priorities? Based on that, what is the action services that we're actually implementing? What is the level of service, you know, is it district-wide or at each school? And then what the, what the actual cost from the parcel tax is for each of those actions and services. And I think when we did this, we actually, we actually wanted to identify the actual dollar amount. And so this was easier to put together because we just completed the report to the parcel tax oversight committee. And our system tracks parcel tax expenditures by options. And so for each of these, we can actually get very quickly the bottom-line dollar amount. So, so the, we did this one first, and the idea was to use something like this to be able to capture LCFF basic grant expenditures in this kind of format. I think the only thing we need to be careful of is what we submit to the county, needs to be sure that we address all of the priorities. So in other words, if the board doesn't, can't fund some items that are addressing a certain state priority, that's the only item to address it, we've got to, we've got to identify something that we can fund, either through existing funds, existing basic grant funds, so that in the submission, the county will see that all eight priorities are being addressed. So that's kind of the plan moving forward.
Yeah, this, as I said, this is great. I really appreciated this. I think it's also a great public transparency document, and it, it connects our parcel tax investment to our immediate, you know, HDA priorities that we need to be addressing, so. All right, and I would venture that few, if any, other districts have done this with their parcel taxes in this way.
And we are still to try to get as much of what the basic grant funds, we just, quite honestly, the, the ability to put it in this format is not the problem, it's generating the dollar amount. So Mr. Banane, I'll be working on trying to find some ways to query the system so that we can pull out the data we want to show what we're funding with basic grant dollars to align to the state priorities, so.
And I guess I would, on that front, you know, I think you, you got an indication from the county, they're not gonna be super strict on, on that requirement for this year. I mean, it seems like you don't need to kill yourself to get the right exact dollar amount.
Right.
But, you know, if you're, you're, you're kind of saying, well, that's about 60% of our instruction, 30% of our facilities investment, or, you know, you get kind of a rough figure, I think.
Yeah, from the general fund, we know that roughly 87% is for salaries and benefits, and the rest go to operational kinds of things, which, as a general rule, aren't so much tied to state priorities, except for the school facilities piece. But everything else is really instructional, so we kind of gotta look at, you know, if we subtract 87% of our general fund budget from 9.8 million dollars, and we take out operational costs, then what, what is the dollar amount left generally used to support instruction, whether it's materials and supplies, instructional materials? And then we can make a pretty close estimate, I think, for what the basic grant investment is, for example, in instructional materials or technology. So I just wanna move us along to section D, appendix D rather. So appendix D was not completed because we were still working on section three. But the idea in appendix B is, and so let me just share with you, that we're calling them slightly different things, but we're looking at funding prior, what the funding priorities, so you see the same items, provide a full-time PE teacher, NE8s, provide a full-time technology teacher. You see the estimated cost, you see the funding sources. And on this sheet, we're also telling you whether it is currently, whether it's in the budget for 1415 or whether it's not. So that, so that when you actually go through prioritization, you can really focus in on those things that are not funded at this point in time. So, but this will be, when, once we finish the next iteration of section two and three, we will have a more, we're actually. we will have a more, we actually don't really need this appendices until hopefully next Friday, when we are able to do the prioritization. So I'm going to tell you how we're going to do the prioritization, you can think about it. Usually I don't share this before we do it, it's got to be a surprise, but this is how we're going to do it. So you're going to have something like appendix, appendix D. I'm going to ask you individually as board members to consider a set of criteria. Staff came up with four. We don't represent that to be the only four, the most important four, but those are four things that we think are important criteria for you to consider as you're weighing what it is that you're going to fund. So they are, you know, those proposals that provide direct services to students, the proposals that impact, have the greatest impact on student achievement and learning, those that have an impact on getting our students college and career-ready, and those proposals that provide students support both in terms of academic and personal growth. So, what we would, what I would ask you to do is that between now and the time we do this, for you to think if there are any other criteria that you think are important considerations as you go through the exercise of developing priorities. So, literally, next Friday, we'll start here, and we'll say, okay, are there any other criteria you think are important before we ask you to prioritize those items that are being proposed for funding? Then, we're going to ask you individually to take about fifteen minutes to take the final list that's on appendix D, and we're going to ask you individually, as individual board members, to prioritize, rank order the items. And there's a little algorithm for how we do this. And in the end, it depends on how many actual funding items end up in appendix D. But then you'll be given little post-its, or colored dots, if you will. And after you individually rank the items from first priority to some number yet to be determined, you'll get those number of dots or post-it, and you're going to come up and you're going to post those dots on each of the funding priorities. That's why these sheets were here, we're going to write, we were going to write them down. And we realized, I think I may have missed a couple because of the formatting issue, but. And then you're going to come up and you're literally going to paste your dots or your post-its next to each item, so that the board then can visually see as a board where you are as a board in terms of what appears to be the highest priority items. Usually when you go to this exercise, the items with the greatest degree of consensus become very apparent upon visual inspection. But you should never make the decisions just based on numbers. So, the whole goal of putting your dots or post-its up there next to each item is, if it appears that there are three or four or five items that have a largest cluster of board responses, and I, you know, say four out of five, then you need to engage in the qualitative conversation about whether or not those really represent what you believe to be the most important priorities for funding. And our goal then next Friday, at this point in terms of our time sequence, is for you to make that decision by next Friday, so that when we prepare the final budget for adoption and the final LCAP plan, that we can reflect that in the plan. Because the county was very clear, they said, do not send us a plan for any items, for any identified needs that are not going to be funded. They don't want to see that. They only want to see what you're going to fund because part of what they're going to do is they're going to look at the cost proposed for funding, and they're going to, one of the criteria for review is, can the district really afford it? So very straightforward process, it'll probably take about forty minutes, forty-five minutes at the most to do that.
And we can, of course, put in an appendix, here's our next, you know, highest need, what we would want to do next. So that if, in fact, we hire the PE teacher who's a first-year instead of a ten-year, we know what we
Yeah, the plan usually with this is, you know, if you have items ranked order from one to ten, and you can only afford to fund three or four, the assumption is that if you get new, identify new revenues, that the board at least would first consider what number five was on the list. And depending on the time when that occurs, and, you know, if there isn't other grants or things that come in that take care of number five, then at least technically, the board should at least have to look at whether number five is in fact the next thing for funding.
And just to add, I think the board already knows this, but as I meet with parents, or as I meet with teachers, I'm trying to do my best to remind people or let them know that the list that we are going to have in front of us by Dr. Sugiyama's analysis runs from seven-hundred-thousand, one-point-two-million dollars in expenditures. And we have about two-hundred-and-forty-thousand of supplemental and concentration funding. So, if by chance you talk to any parents or teachers, you know, just so you know the message I've been sending when I get the chance, and you have those numbers.
But I guess, just so you can at least take a futures planning approach to this, too, I think the current projection, as Mr. Renee presented tonight, is next year, two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand in supplemental concentrated grant. And the projection, based on actual calculator, it's a kind of a hybrid. You use both FICMAT and school services. One organization is much more conservative than the other, but maybe too conservative. So, you know, this using the hybrid of both calculators, a kind of number, projects that for fifteen, sixteen, the district will receive another about two-hundred-thousand dollars. And then the year after that, approximately another two-hundred-thousand, just in terms of round numbers. So, if there are things that can't be funded in year one, assuming that those projections bear out with the actual allocation of dollars from the state, the board will have opportunities to consider funding other priorities. And of course, as you go through the process of revising the LCAP, there may be other needs that are identified in the subsequent year that's not on the current list, so.
And the base eighty-five thousand dollar, again, that's, you presented that as eighty-five thousand dollars in additional base, but just to be clear, are you saying that's canceled out by the other problems we have with losing gear up and
And the STIRS is going to take up about sixty percent of that, if it goes through.
Right, so the fifty-seven thousand on STIRS, that's, so it's eighty-five before all of those other negatives are considered.
That's correct, that's correct.
It's not two-hundred-and-forty-one plus eighty-five, it's just two-hundred-and-forty-one.
I just want the board to be aware that the twentieth, when we meet, that's the day we publish the packet for the twenty-fifth. So, I don't know what that packet's going to look like, if we'll be, and we'll definitely be making revisions on the twentieth, so FYI.
Well, maybe we have to have our LCAP adoption on Friday, the twenty-seventh.
Ooh, that knocked one out. Knocked one out.
We got to do it by June thirtieth. So maybe Monday, June thirtieth, I don't know.
No, we're missing one over there, so the twenty-sixth, Thursday the twenty-sixth, instead of June twenty-fifth?
Six AM flight on the twenty-seventh, it's twenty-sixth.
Oh. It's evil.
Yeah, but it could just, it could just be the LCAP.
Well, this may, if the board, next Friday makes some final proposals, revise it, as long as the board understands you might not get it till Tuesday morning, and you're okay with that.
Yeah, that's the reality about now.
And you'll know what the changes will be made to it, so. It's not like you would have seen the whole thing for the first time.
True.
I'm good with, I'm good with that.
Sorry, I, yeah. We're going to get it Tuesday morning, the twenty-fourth, is what we're saying?
That depending on how much more revisions we have to make out of it.
That's okay with me, does that satisfy the board, you know, Brown Act?
Posting.
Yeah, there's not a problem, it's not uncommon sometimes for attachments not to be ready for variety reasons. It's as long as the agenda is proper, as long as the item is properly agendized so the public knows what actions the board is going to take. I know boards don't typically like to receive majority things, like on the night of the board meeting. But that does happen from time to time, but.
So, so we're clear, we're going to go forward, we're adding Friday, and we're keeping twenty-fifth, okay. Okay. I don't have a life, so that works for me. So, so we are, we've covered now the study session on local control accountability plan for tonight. And we're now adjourned, so.